All right, Kenmore City Council will come to order. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Marshall. Councilmember Shrubnik.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Excused.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
All right, and Commissioner Marin, you want to call your meeting to order?
Yeah, I'll be calling the North Shore Fire Department Fire Commissioner meeting to order. And would the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Verlinda.
Here.
Commissioner Pratt.
Present.
Commissioner Webster.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis is absent. Deputy Chief Magnuson.
Here.
Fire Chief Laflam, I mean Fire Marshal Laflam.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, if you'll all please join me in the flag salute. All right, so the first part of our meeting here is the joint meeting with the North Shore Fire District Board, and the first part of that agenda is a NIMCO emergency management update. I think Brian's going to be leading that discussion.
Thank you, Council, and thank you Commissioners for talking about this tonight. It's a very important topic that gets overlooked or not talked about enough, so thank you for the opportunity to give you a brief update. We do have our emergency manager Carl Lunak with us here tonight, and he'll explain a little bit of stuff we've been working on the last year or two. As you may or may not recall, the NIMCO organization formed in January 2017, and it includes Lake Forest Park, North Shore Fire District, Kenmore, and North Shore Utility District. And so we have the four partners that are part of NIMCO. We join together to provide emergency services throughout all of our boundaries. And so Kenmore, the city of Kenmore, has our city boundaries, Lake Forest Park has their city boundaries, the Fire District combines both the city, both cities as their boundaries, and North Shore Utility District has a little different boundary. So we do cover all of the four boundaries of the, in the, in the organization. And with that, the fees and the costs associated with the NIMCO themselves are broken down into this way. And so 30.75% are shared by the two cities, and the North Shore Fire District is actually 23.5% of the budget, and the North Shore Utility District is 15% of the budget. And our 2019 annual budget is currently $150,652, and of that $19,960 is funded by emergency management grants through federal programs. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Carl to give an update on what we've been working on.
Yeah, well, thank you for having me tonight. Just wanted to meet with you since we had the opportunity with both of you together, just to talk about kind of progress since things began in 2017. We sat down with leadership from each of the four agencies, kind of laid out an agenda of kind of reoccurring items that we'd spend a significant amount of energy and effort towards, and those I kind of summarized in front of you with the, what we presented. We started out, of course, wanting to make sure that staff is adequately trained and prepared to respond in an emergency, and with that, how we would pull staff together to form an emergency operations center. Early on in the process, we made the decision that a single emergency operations center would be the most effective and efficient way to do it with limited city staff and the difficulties in during an event to get enough bodies in the room to really manage a true emergency. That's one of the advantages of partnering together in this type of relationship, is we can pull people who are not as directly impacted into being able to run that emergency operations center. And so we determined that the good, best location for that would be Joint EOC at the North Shore Fire Station in the community room there. So we, it was built that way and set up and designed to serve in that function, and it's where we host our emergency operations center. Since we formed, we've had six kind of formalized trainings with staff to go over emergency response, EOC setup, what that joint staffing would look like, and kind of the initial roles and responsibilities for various different emergency situations. Since inception, we've only activated the emergency operations center twice that we've actually had an activation. This year's snow event was one of them, and then last year, we had some early or late year snow, and that was the other opportunity we actually activated the EOC. Both of those times, really it was just a coordination function. It wasn't a significant event where, you know, we're overwhelmed or didn't have resources or really needed to activate beyond just coordination and monitoring the event and then just helping with that communication. But it definitely was an opportunity to prove that the concept works, and it did benefit have all the partners to open up that EOC. We continue to do all kinds of specialized trainings in specific with our section chiefs, which are representative from, from each city, and then the Fire and North Shore Utility District come in and fill a liaison role or backfill other positions as they can with staff to help the function of the EOC. One of the other big areas that we spend a lot of energy on is community outreach and education. The better prepared our community is, the less resources we need to dedicate to those folks immediately after an event. So we spent quite a bit of time doing community outreach, and that includes at least two workshops that we host. It's about a four-hour class where we talk about preparedness, family plan, a lot of those types of elements of emergency preparedness in the home, workplace, businesses as well. We've also had a number of different meetings with school boards, both Shoreline Schools as well as the North Shore School District, worked with some of the teachers' staff at Kenmore Elementary. I've done a lot of other outreach and education within the, the community, but formally, we always have at least two workshops a year, and then our biggest kind of outreach effort is our community emergency response teams. And that is a eight-week-long, once-a-week class, 24 hours of total instruction, that covers emergency preparedness and a number of other topics that really helps train some of our citizens to fill a critical volunteer role during an emergency. All right, so it could be anything from helping us with, you know, moving traffic signs around to sandbagging to all kinds of other types of responsibilities, including we've actually activated a couple of our CERT members when we had a missing child in the Lake Forest Park, Sheridan Beach area here a while ago. They were found before we got deployed, but hey, we activated, so that was a good, good practice. Speaking of those volunteers, once folks go through some level of training, a lot of them get interested in emergency management and kind of want more education and information. We currently have a database of about 365, a little bit over that now, of folks in our community that want ongoing information. So they're always getting emails of upcoming training and other opportunities to get involved in the community. Of those, 66 of them are either ham radio licensed or CERT graduates or both that have given us a background check document. We've run a background check on them and credentialed them as credentialed volunteers. So that way, when the disaster strikes, when we have a missing child, we know that we've got a pool of right now 66 volunteers that are in our community that we can request and we can put to work right away, knowing what their background is, knowing what their skills are, knowing that they're safe to be around vulnerable populations, and just a real force multiplier. And so that's a real solid output from our CERT teams, our amateur radio group, and it's something that is, is exciting, that it's there in our community and a great asset that we've developed. Of those, we're still showing about an average of 50 of those individuals, of all those volunteers, showing up every single month to our regular meetings that we host. Once a month, we have a ham radio meeting and a kind of all-volunteer meeting, and we're averaging about 50 folks per, per meeting, split between the two meetings. Again, just interested in emergency management, interested in what we're doing as a city, looking for more training, more opportunity to be involved and help out the community that they live in and love, so pretty impressive numbers. Some other things that we're working on right now, we've got a exercise that we're working on developing out completely late October. Now it's looking more like mid-November before we actually will do that exercise. There's something we try to do at least every year to get city staff together and at least do some element, whether it's a tabletop discussion-based exercise, or if it's a little more involved, exercise, a functional of some sort. And we're doing another one coming up that's going to focus on communication. That was one of the things after our snow event that always comes up, you know, "Ah, we can always do a better job of communicating." So it's one of those that we're going to work on a little bit more, and it's going to be the focus of our next exercise. Additionally, the Great Shakeout is held every year in October, 10/17, at 10/17. Hope you're all going to practice a drop-cover-and-hold drill with everyone else, both the two city staff, Lake Forest Park, Kenmore, as well as the Utility District, I know are all participating, as well as, I believe, the admin folks at North Shore Fire, but I haven't confirmed that yet. We'll be drop-covering and holding, and as part of that, we are encouraging they snap a selfie and send it to me, and then we randomly select amongst our submitted selfies for fabulous prizes, like case of old MREs or something, I don't know, it's real quality prizes. Other things, just want to brief you on, one of the, the great tools that we're utilizing that we're right now in the middle of a major rehab with is our notification system. That's the Alert North Shore system. Behind that, the name probably people may be more familiar with is Code Red. Same system the county uses, as well as just about every major city in our area. It, it works as a reverse 911 system, so we can notify our public in an emergency with that information, but it also works as a email and text messaging system. So if we have a localized emergency, a blocked road, you know, 522 car accident type of a scenario, it's real easy to send out a message saying, "Hey, expect delays, we've got a major accident in this area," and, you know, use alternate routes if possible. It's a great tool that we have. We are encouraging more and more folks all the time to, to sign up for that, and we have the ability to send out notifications ourselves, whether it's the cities, Fire District, Utility, or we can request that the county send it out, and they can grab all of the landlines in the area and reverse 911 dial them. We can pre-record a message or have computer voice if we like, just to get that message out. It's a great system that we continue to develop and work on, train city staff on, and we're right in the middle of a big overhaul of that system, so. And then finally, the, kind of the last big element that we, big project for this year was to develop a hazard mitigation plan. That is a requirement for any type of hazard mitigation potential funding that may come back to the, the cities. A few years back, you may remember, in Lake Forest Park, they were able to get some hazard mitigation money to address some of the flooding issues. It's right there by the, by 522, and they redid some culvert work right at that point around the mall area. And so we developed a hazard mitigation plan for, for the city of Kenmore, one additionally for Lake Forest Park, and then North Shore Fire, because they serve both those two communities, make sure that they're tied in to those two plans. And then those plans get forwarded to the county and tied into a regional plan that the county then forwards, and that leaves us eligible for any mitigation monies that may be available in the future for, for projects that we've identified as hazards that we face, and some mitigation activities that we might be able to take, so. Those are kind of my quick bullet item updates. I happily sit here all night and share with you. But right now, actually just down at the fire station tonight, we have 30 teenagers in our very first-ever teen CERT class. So we offered two CERT classes this fall. We have a regular class being held during the day, and then now we have a teen CERT in the evening, and we've got a full 30 teenagers, from 12 to 19, taking a, a community emergency response team training. So I'm pretty excited about that. It's the first time we've had real success with that younger generation, so. Get them trained now, they'll be there for us.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, it looks like the next presentation is City Fire Marshal Partnership. Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, thanks again. Another way that the city partners with the North Shore Fire District is through the Fire Prevention Bureau, and there's a lot of work that goes on there that doesn't necessarily get recognized all that often. So we wanted to kind of draw your attention towards that partnership and the relationship we have specifically with your Fire Marshal and your Fire Inspector. Jeff Laflam, your Fire Marshal, he is at the city pretty frequently and regularly. We consider him, you know, a team player and a co, almost a coworker. He reviews most of the change of uses, the new construction, the land use permits for plats, multifamily, and the land use phases, and then also in the construction phases. So we really appreciate all of the work that goes on by the Fire District, help out the city with the fire review side of it, including the, those types of relationship. He always come, he's, he comes to all the pre-application meetings, and so we conduct probably in the range of 70 to 100 pre-application meetings a year, and Jeff's regularly at those meetings and participating in those meetings, and really appreciate that. One thing that's been really nice with the relationship of the Fire District and Fire Marshal is the, the Can Do solution-oriented method that he uses, and so anytime, as everybody aware, is aware, Kenmore is pretty built out. We don't have large pieces of property that people can put in a perfectly wide street that conforms to our road standards or, you know, this or that. So there's a lot of common sense and give and take that has to go into being creative with these developments that come in. And Jeff Laflam is really creative to find ways to make projects work that we know would be beneficial to the city. And so I just wanted to really emphasize that the fact that the relationship with the Fire Marshal and the Fire District and the city are important and a lot of times overlooked. In addition to the work that I did mention, he also helps us in assigning addresses to every piece of parcel and house and structure in the building. And we inherited most of the addressing through King County, so there was a lot of interesting numbered and addressed houses. And Jeff and Samantha Loyac, our planner, have been going through the city, various places, and cleaning up a lot of the addressing, which is a lot of work. One of the least funnest things to do is to tell somebody that they have to change their ad, you know, their la, address and their, all their mailing stuff, and it's a pain, a pain in the neck, and Jeff has had a lot of conversations with our property owners and business owners and has helped make it go really smooth. Did you want to add anything?
I don't think there's anything I can add to that. I think he did a great job.
Well, I just wanted to thank the, the district for the relationship that we have with the Fire Prevention Bureau and all the work that goes on together, so thank you.
All right, next up, we've got a Fire District consolidation update. Acting Chief Magnuson?
Yeah, so back in late May, early June, the three Fire Chiefs of Shoreline, North Shore, and Woodville directed Fire Commissioners to formulate consolidation or do that. We came up with some guiding principles. First one being, does it provide quantifiable service improvements, cost reductions compared with the SaaS flow? Is it beneficial arrangement in terms of resource commitment, cost and risk exposure?
Too loud. Does it have a high likelihood of success that will lead to stable and sustainable organization? Is there a comprehensive plan for implementation with commitment from all agencies to see the project through to completion? Do the, do the organizations have a shared vision of the outcome, and does the partnership provide benefits by achieving something that the organizations can't achieve individually? The other Fire Chiefs and I have been working on this probably about once a week since that time. A couple of things have, have become very evident. Number one, all three organizations are not run the same way. There's, there's some pretty vast differences in philosophies and just organizational structures within them. North Shore is certainly showing itself to be a very efficient lean machine, and that's a bit of a hurdle to make the whole, to make a whole thing work on our type of arrangement. We're just not a large enough organization. We don't do some of the things that, for instance, Shoreline does. And by that, I would, I would say like, for instance, would be a ladder truck. We, we have some technical operations people, but we don't have a ladder company. Pretty large piece of apparatus, pretty expensive, hard to maintain. Woodville also has something like that, and it's a, a piece that would be required for high-rise, mid-rise and high-rise structures. Over that period of time, we were continuing to, to kind of quantify what a structure would look like, what an organizational structure would look, look like. We're to the point that we're starting to present to the Commissioners some administrative organization structures that we believe will work. Hopefully, they're not too involved in, in the number of personnel, but there's a, there's a lot of things that a single organization can do that the, the three organizations aren't doing really well individually. And, and by that, I mean, we've got three Fire Chiefs and four Deputy Chiefs across those three organizations that are all focused on doing a variety of things, not necessarily directly focused in doing one specific thing for that organization, kind of jack-of-all-trades, master-of-none, if you will. We, we believe that we've got, that we've come up with a, a workable solution. In the process of that, I think some people were under the impression that it would be substantially less expensive. What we're finding is that for a dollar that we've saved in one location, we end up, there's a, a cost in another location that we maybe hadn't thought about initially. So it appears, for all intents and purposes, that a combined organization would be pretty much cost-neutral, maybe a few savings and some efficiencies along the way, but more importantly, it's starting to show that we might be able to find some efficiencies that would make us more effective in the product that we bring to the citizens and the, and a little bit better level of service, if you will. So we're, we're still very early in this. We haven't, we haven't even agreed, in all reality, to what a, an administrative structure is. I think the only thing that we have consensus on is that the line staff, the, the boots on the, on the streets, so to speak, the people that are going to be, that respond in the local communities, probably wouldn't be a tremendous, tremendous change in that regard. Through the process, it's been very interesting. We have identified some things where we can, we actually believe that whether we come, come together and into a combined organization or even remain the same, we've found a few items that we think that we can do a little bit better and provide a little bit better service toward the citizens that we serve. So there are good things coming out of this, whether it comes to fruition or not. The key thing is, is I think that we need to ask all the hard questions, get the hard answers, and make the, make a decision based on the facts, not, not speculation. So with that, I'd open it up to questions if anybody has anything specific they'd like to ask about.
I have a couple comments to lay her on top of what the chief mentioned, and, and one of them is that we are not going to do this without coordination with the cities and our other partners. The, the citizens will be involved in this, and it's going to be a solution that's good for the citizens of this, of this district and the cities of this district. And we think that's possible. We may have to be creative in how we approach it, but I think also, to kind of put this in perspective, if you look at the fire departments in this county or in this region, Stowmish County and King County, we used to have, it was like 40 fire departments in our area.
At one point in time.
At one point in time, and through consolidation, that's about half as many now today. All of South King County and the Kent area and, and the Fedaway, Des Moines, Buren area, they're consolidated down there in two different agencies. South Stowmish County just consolidated, they're consolidated up at, up in the Arlington area, and, and Watkin County's consolidated. The North King County enclave is one of the few places where we've seen no change, but the market forces and the demands on us to be excellent at everything we do makes it increasingly difficult for a small department to achieve that level of excellence, and that's where we think you want us to be and where we need to be. So we'll be staying in touch. So as the chief said, any questions, please?
And even if something comes up in the, in the future and you, you think about it, feel free to send me an email or, yeah.
Thanks, Eric and Dave. My question is, with, with the process of analyzing where your efficiencies are and everything, will you be, or the board, or commission be engaging at any type of independent organization like what was done with the RFA study that analyzed the different agencies and, and talked about where there was efficiencies that could be gained, or there was deficiencies in service, or just it kind of, it gave a good broad, in-depth thorough review of the whole process, and, and especially since it has to come back to the citizens, you're talking about engaging the citizens, I would think something, an objective report like that would be of immense value and helpful to the process. Could you just tell me when that would happen or how that happens?
Well, I'll tell you right now, we're not there yet. We are building off of the RFA study that we did with Woodenville, Bothell, and North Shore a few years ago, and so we have, those parameters are already in our scope of what we're looking at. And then once we get the data, the, the three boards are first going to decide if it makes sense to take it to the next step. And that next step may actually include some consultation with some experts, with some people to try to help us find a path forward. There's also the opportunity for us to, to do this in steps, where we would consolidate administrations instead of all the departments. For example, there's also the opportunity for us to do functional consolidations like Fire Marshal's offices. There's a, opportunities for us to share chiefs, those kinds of things. Eastside Fire and Rescue has a different model of consolidation where the underlying agencies still exist, and they still tax at their, at their tax rates, and they buy a level of service from Eastside Fire and Rescue, not too different than what you do with the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department. But as soon as we get to that place where we make the decision to go forward, then I'll be able to get back to you with a better answer.
So, thanks, Dave. Would, would, so it, just so I understand, I'm trying, because I'm trying to wrap my head around the chronology of how your whole process works, does, would that study be done before an administrative consolidation took place?
Maybe and maybe not.
Why wouldn't it?
Well, be, if, if it, if it appears that it's a straightforward solution to do that, I think the boards are confident enough that we can do that on our own. If we're going to go to a more complex solution, like when we're going to, if we're going to take all the different taxing rates that the different districts have, different kinds of services they provide, and try and make a homogenous district across Woodenville, North Shore, and Shoreline, much more complex. The other thing about a consolidation, if we did that, where the voters actually voted to combine the agencies, that's kind of irreversible, but if you do an administrative consolidation and it doesn't work out, you can back out of that because it's simply a memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, I guess the way I was, I see what, I mean, that makes sense, what you're saying. I was interpreting it more that if you've already made the administrative consolidation, then I believe it makes it a lot harder to stop any other consolidation because you've already, you've already taken step one before you've involved the public. That's, that's why.
A, a good example might be in Stowmish County, Fire District Seven and the city of Monro, and the Monroe Fire District consolidated administrations, and it was basically a test to see if that consolidation would work. And after doing that for a little over a year, they decided it was a success, and then they brought it before the voters to consolidate those two agencies, and that was about an 80% approval rating by the citizens, because it wasn't just, I'm here from the government, trust me, I know what's good for you. And then just this last election, Lake Stevens Fire District voted to annex into the Stowmish County Seven District. So now they have three agencies that are involved up there. So I think there's, there's good precedence for us to do it that way, but again, you still have to, in order to consolidate an agency, you have to get the voters to vote yes. In order to do that, you have to have a convincing case for them, and if it takes a consultant to help us build that case, we can do that. If we think we have it within our own agencies to do that, I think we can also do it that way, but those decisions have been made yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Curtis?
I guess my question is, is there some reason that this area is a holdout? Is there something uniquely better about it, all these, or, or more competitive? Is there something uniquely better about all these, or more competitive, or so is there a reason that we're acting different than most other areas?
Well, I blame it on Northshore Utility District because there must be something in the water, is all I can tell you. There's no good rational reason for doing it this way. I think one of the things that happened in the south end, especially during the recession, there were some really strong demands to reduce costs, to get cities out of the fire department business, and that didn't hit us quite as hard up here. One of the reasons we did the RFA study with Bothell was exactly that. Bothell was spending about, over half of their budget was going to police and fire departments. They were trying to find a way to reduce those costs. And those motivational factors have not been strong out here.
Councilmember Shablek.
Kind of the same concern as councilmember Smith on terms of proceeding with administrative consolidation prior to really laying out a plan and informing residents. So that's just sort of a concern. And then, I think, you know, one thing that can sometimes be overlooked, but maybe it wouldn't be if, you know, you had a full study, would be the cost of a transition per se. You know, what does it cost to change over your, you know, information systems, your HR systems, and, you know, that kind of thing? I mean, they may be one time, but they're often substantial. So that's the other piece.
Okay, to answer those questions, the, one of the things that we've already, we're already consolidating in some areas, for example, we have East Metro Training Group, and we're just launching our, another more localized training group with Woodinville and Shoreline, Bothell, and Northshore. And so we know that those things just don't happen because you decided today you're going to merge those. There's challenges between, in front of those. And as far as the costs, our communication system, we're all under NORCOM, so that's not an issue. We all do have separate IT systems. We have, some agencies have our HR systems, some don't. We process our books under our standard bar system, but we do it a little bit differently with different classes of employees. So it's not trivial, and your concerns are noted.
Any other questions? Councilmember Smith.
Yes, I have another question, and it has to do with, since the cities of Lake Forest Park, Kenmore, and Shoreline, and Woodinville, all have a clear vested interest in making sure this works efficiently and effectively, would it be beyond the realm of possibility to have a representative, whether it was a staff person from those cities, or possibly even an elected official from those cities, that could participate or at least be a part of the meetings that are happening with the three different agencies? And I think it would be nice just to have, I mean, those three cities are all, or four cities are all the ones impacted significantly, and I think it would be beneficial to the process and the transparency of it to have something like that.
As soon as the sirens die down. I don't know why we can't find some way to do that. We're one of the agencies involved, and we'll bring that to our small group meeting that's coming up the end of this month. And then, following that, we'll have, this will be our third small group meeting that's really focused on the finances and employee organizational structure. And then, we'll bring it back to the large group where all three boards will be together, and I'll bring that suggestion to them.
That'd be great. And now, I should, I probably prefaced my comments with, that was my opinion. I haven't, we haven't discussed this at the council level, so just so you know, that's probably something that, I just wanted to get your feedback on it, but I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, and we want to reach out to our partners, and we want, if we can't convince the cities it's a good thing to do, I think our chances of convincing the citizens it's a good thing to do is pretty minimal. So you're definitely going to be in the mix, one way or the other.
Sense.
Any other questions? All right. Next topic is Station 54 Future Use. Commissioner Marin.
Thank you. And I'll keep this pretty brief. I think most of you are familiar that we have an old volunteer fire station that's just east of Arrowhead Elementary. And we haven't used that fire station since nineteen eighty or seventies. I think it was in the seventies that we stopped using that. It's really not suitable for a fire station right now, the building is not, because our, first of all, our engines won't fit in, the garages, they got bigger, and the garage didn't. There's no sleeping quarters there, and it was just meant as a volunteer, where we had one or two people slept on cots in the watch office. But in the nineteen nineties and through part of the two thousands, that building has been a Boys and Girls Club, it has been a Kenmore City storefront location for the Police Department, it's been a bit of a community center, the YMCA has occupied it for a while. And so it does have some functionality. Currently, we have it under a conditional use permit. We have a renter in there that's using it kind of as a mini warehouse space. And we understand the city has some concerns about continuing that conditional use permit. What I want to do tonight is just kind of open up, make an offer to the city to sit down with us and find out what uses that might have. We have not formally decided to retain that property, but if you look at the map that was provided, the response map, I don't think you could put that station in a better location to serve that part of our district that's on the south end hill. We can get virtually any place in five minutes from there, all the way down to the bottom of Arrowhead, almost into Quinola Estates, all the, Ingmore High School, all those places are covered. So as this area develops, I do see potential for that to become a fire station. Maybe it would only be an aid car-only fire station, but I do see us using that up there as the calls for service increase. Right now, I think we get about one call per day up there on an average. But as you develop, Lake Point and Kenmore Downtown is more developed, it really makes a lot of sense for us to be able to approach Kenmore from a different direction, so we can come from the south into town. And that's also one of the standards that fire departments are doing now. Instead of locating a station in the downtown area, they locate stations outside the downtown and respond in. It's just more effective that way. So that's where we're at, and I think that maybe in a partnership with the city, we could find, again, go back, find a good common use for that area while we're waiting to build a station.
Any comments, questions? Okay, thank you. Next up, excuse me, we've got Northshore Fire Departments propose 2020 Enhanced Community CPR AED Training Initiative. Commissioner Marin.
Again, this is an initiative we actually started last year. Because of some distractions and challenges, we've held it off, and it's now going to be in the 2020 budget. And our plan is to expand our CPR training. Right now, we train about two hundred people per year in CPR at the fire station. And for a district this size, we think we can do better. And I've always told people that, it's a little bit selfish on my part, because when I have my heart attack, I really would like the person next to me when I fall down to know how to do CPR. So it's not like we're the only provider of CPR training. NEMCO does some CPR training, the hospitals do, there's private instructions out there. But what we would like to do for the cities of Kenmore and Lake Forest Park is provide free CPR training. It wouldn't be the kind of training that you would use to, as a certification for your employment, if it was required there. But friends and family would still get you to the place where you'd be competent in doing that. And I know Mayor Baker had it in your 2019 strategic plan to be a partner in this, and what we would be asking for is not funding for that. It's more about getting the word out, getting people to attend the classes, and generating a real enthusiasm for CPR training, because it used to be a stronger message to have CPR training than it is today, and I'd like to get it back to where it used to be.
I think that's commendable, and I think that's something that we can help with our normal communications and social media and all that sort of.
And as we envisioned it, it would be, the training would be free, not only for the residents here, but all for people that are employed here. So.
Sounds like a great service. Any questions? Councilmember Curtis.
I had a question on page one, the friends and family CPR. I look at course description, and it sounds like it's a huge number of topics they're trying to cover in one hour, including, you know, child CPR with breaths, and AED use, and infant CPR. And to me, that seems like way more than a one-hour topic, when you look at the number of things on that list.
Let me have the chief kind of address that. It's been successful so far. We're not looking at a competency level that's high, but more familiarization. But chief, you want to?
Sure. I think what you're reading there is, there's very minute differences between whether it be adult, or, you know, there's slightly different rates, but for the most part, the CPR is all the same. So it's actually a fairly simple method. And this, what they're talking about here is hands-only, meaning that it's just compressions, which has been proven in fairly recent documentation to be a fairly effective way to get even non-CPR-trained people the ability to provide some circulation in cardiac arrest victims.
But it says there are adult CPR with breaths and child CPR with breaths.
Right, that would be a secondary type thing. So they would start with hands-only as they're ready to move on. It's not a tremendously high-skilled information, I don't think, but I've been trained in it for a number of years, too.
Because I see some of the other classes are like two hours, two and a half hours, four hours, and the topics seem about the same.
So those go into great, more depth of the physiological aspects of the human body and result in a certification. What we're talking about here is a non-certified knowledge base. So to meet the certification requirements, there are certain curriculum that has to go all the way through, including the in-depth physiological aspects.
If you've been teaching it and it's been working, I'm going to trust you. It still seems like a lot of information.
Any other questions? All right, moving right along. Next topic is Western Amish Bridge Replacement Project Status. City Manager, Rob Carlinzey.
Thank you. This is pretty hot, pretty hot off the press, but I think we're going to go out to bid on this project next week. So we're just in the final stages of getting our last federal permit for that, and we'll go out to bid next week, and then open bids a few weeks later. Cross your fingers, hopefully it's a good bidding climate right now, and hopefully the one-year delay that was caused by not getting our permits in time last February will not increase our costs too much. If we get good bids and they're within budget, then we'll award the bids right after the first year, and they'll get started in the spring, just in time to make the sixty-day in-water work fish window in July and August. And because it's only sixty days per year that they're allowed to work in the water, we'll have to actually come back for three summers, so it'll be a three-year project. But of course, we're going to be definitely ramping up our efforts to coordinate with different agencies, including the Fire District, on how to keep traffic moving across that bridge during construction. Many of you might know that in the plan and in the bid documents is a way to try to keep all four lanes of traffic open as much as possible. You didn't hear me say "all the time." But the, we're paying extra for this, but the idea is, is that when the contractor first gets started, we'll actually leave the old bridge alone, cars will be able to travel on it. And then, while they're doing that, they're going to build the outside portion of the bridge first. So the bridge gets wider and it shifts to the west. And once we get that western half of the bridge built, and let me back up a little bit, the bridge, it feels like one bridge, but it's actually two bridges. There's the northbound bridge that was built in the seventies, and it's doing fine. We have it inspected often, and it's a good, solid bridge. But the southbound bridge is the one that we're replacing. It's over eighty years old, it's actually eighty-one years old. And so that's the one that we're replacing. So northbound bridge is not going to be touched at all, and traffic will be able to continue northbound on that. But southbound is the one that's being replaced, and we're, like I said, building that outer portion first. Once that outer portion is completed, then we'll move southbound traffic, hopefully two lanes, onto that outer portion of the bridge, and then we'll demolish the old bridge and then finish the bridge. So by doing it that way, it's more expensive, takes a little bit longer, but we'll hopefully be able to keep traffic moving two lanes in each direction as much as possible. We will have lane closures, there's no doubt about that. So we're not making any grand promises about keeping all four lanes open all the time, but we're doing our best to keep traffic open as much as possible.
One question, so you build the first half of the bridge, then you wait a year and you go to the next half of the bridge, or how's that scheduled?
I think the contractor will be able to keep working on other parts of the bridge, like approaches and abutments. It's just the in-water work that they have to wait on?
All right, then we've got other city updates. Rob?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick updates. We're gearing up for winter, and we're all ready with de-icer and sand, and got all of our trucks ready to go. You may be aware that we actually entered into an inter-local agreement with Northshore Utility District to supplement our snow plowing services. So they have three snow plows that we paid for, and that when they, when they're deployed, we pay for the overtime and the truck usage when they're used. And that partnership came in really handy during Snowmageddon last February. It was really nice to have Northshore Utility District helping us, especially since we were a brand-new, in-house public works department. And since then, we've gotten additional trucks. We have our very own dump truck now that will be equipped with a sander and a plow. And back when we were contracting with Northshore Utility District for snowplow services and other public work services, we had five trucks combined between the two cities, and all by ourselves. Now, with Northshore Utilities District helping us, we'll have six trucks just for Kenmore. Potentially, we could have eight if there's enough staffing, but conservatively, we'll say six plows will be able to be going for just for Kenmore instead of five shared between two cities. And then, lastly, and I got Brian here, you're welcome to jump in on this, but Lake Point has a slight pulse, would you say?
Yeah.
So.
It's not on CPR yet.
Yeah, so many of you know that the Widener Apartment Homes decided to not proceed with the project late last year, and early this year, we continued conversations with them. But since Widener's departure, we've had a number of potential developers calling the city, kicking the tires, so to speak. One thing we decided to do, and this was with councils, city councils' help and guidance, is we're actually retaining a consultant to do what we call a "less is more" study for Lake Point. And what we mean by that is, most developers, when they come across a piece of land, they maximize their profits by packing in as much as they can onto the site higher, as high as possible, as dense as possible. And we actually had a consultant named Brian O'Connor that was helping us last year, and given the site's conditions, the problems with the soil stability and other issues, he actually suggested that less is more might counter-intuitively be a way to approach Lake Point, and definitely atypical. So what we mean by less is more is structures that are not as hot. So what we mean by less is more is structures that are not as high, not as dense, will require less infrastructure, less pile driving, less transportation infrastructure. And anyway, we're contracted with him to take a look at that and give us several scenarios under a less is more philosophy, and he should be producing that report in the next couple of months.
Couple of months, yeah.
Yeah. Not saying less is more is going to work. We're, we just want to explore it and see where it takes us.
All right, and then our final topic, other fire district updates, updates, acting chief Magnuson?
Sure. I'll, excuse me, try to follow Rob's lead there. Just give you a couple of updates that we're going through currently in the fire department. We have four new recruits currently in recruit school. It takes us about six months from a job offer to, to a new firefighter that's on, on the line, and they just started about three, four weeks ago. We'll be in a hiring process, looking at bringing another three on for a January academy. We will be opening bids on two new fire engines on this Friday afternoon. Hopefully, we'll have two brand-new fire engines in the district about this time next year. That's about how long it takes to, to get those spec, or not specced out, but built. We're also doing a small interior remodel down at Station 57 in Lake Forest Park over the winter that will probably necessitate having the paramedics that are currently stationed down there stationed at Station 51 for about three months, probably over the course of December, January, and February. So you might see a little bit more action in the front along 181 here. I'm trying to think of what else we have coming up in the next, not too distant, future. That's about it for, for the next six months or so, hopefully, anyway. I said that, yeah, three new hires in, in January. Looking for that.
Any other questions, comments before we wrap this up?
Yeah. I just want to introduce the two new commissioners that we have here. Josh Pratt is a resident of Arrowhead neighborhood. He used to be a teacher up at Inglemore High School. And Josh, let me have you say a little bit about yourself and why you're a fire commissioner.
Yeah, we're on. Okay. So Josh Pratt, resident of Arrowhead neighborhood, been in Kenmore for 16 years now. Like Commissioner Marin said, I used to teach at Inglemore High School, then transitioned to the fire service where I serve in Kirkland. And saw an opportunity to continue to serve my community here on the fire commission with the, with the open spot, and so took the opportunity and jumped in. So glad to be here. Thank you.
And our second new commissioner is Rick Webster. He's a resident of North Kenmore. Both of these commissioners have about six, you know, what, four weeks and six weeks on the job, so their, their learning curve is kind of steep, and I'll let Rick.
Hi, I'm, like I said, Rick Webster. I've lived in Kenmore since 84, raised my family here, and now my daughters are also raising their families here, so Kenmore's our home forever. And that's how I got involved with the fire commissioner, is wanted to get back to our community. And I was asked if I was interested and jumped right in. I worked in the construction industry for 40-some years and retired, and I worked as a manager, so this, my experience should help quite a bit for understanding what's happening in our fire department. And I look forward to serving our city and our fire department. Thank you.
I think I can speak for the city council and say thank you for your service, both of you, and for jumping in. I know it's not easy always to jump into public service, but it's greatly appreciated. There's nothing else to come before us right now. We're going to adjourn for about five minutes, and then we will reconvene up on the dais for the rest of our city council meeting. Thank you guys so much for coming out here. We really appreciate it. Kenmore City Council will come back to order. We are on item six, business agenda. Item A, update on CIP Project P-30, Rodent and Boathouse. Rob Ser McCord, Parks Project Manager.
Thank you, council. Yes, so Rob is here this evening, as well as Janina Glavachi with Osborne Consulting, who's a consultant. She's here to answer any questions as well. So tonight, we have a very brief presentation, and Rob will be going over that with you. And we're looking for direction on two items. One, on how to move forward with the construction and schedule, and secondly, on the funding. There's a little bit of a funding gap. So there are two items that we'll be looking for direction, but before we get to that, I'm going to turn it over to Rob to go through the PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to launch right into this. So, Kenmore Boathouse. The city is planning on constructing a boathouse for community programs and school district programs in Rota Dension Park alongside the float and boardwalk that were put in recently. About a year ago, after community meetings with advisory committee and reviewing all the options for the boathouse, the city determined to go with a full boathouse design as compared to a 20-by-70 boathouse, so we're looking at a 40-by-70 boathouse. In the fall of 2018, the remaining funds from the St. Edward's Ballpark project were transferred to this project. And we are now in the 90% design and cost analysis stage, and we're looking to get these answers, as Debbie mentioned, before moving to the 100% stage coming up. So just to brief over a couple of renderings of the boathouse, it'll be a nice shining beacon for the community right alongside the 68th Ave Bridge. This will be what it looks like from the bridge. The interior of the boathouse, as you can see, there's storage on the main level on the ground floor, and then depending on which option we pursue, a coaching and multipurpose space upstairs in the mezzanine. So what we're looking at right now are a couple of different options. As Debbie mentioned, the current cost projections for the boathouse exceed the allocation for the project by roughly $65,000 for the full boathouse, or we have a small surplus of $26,000 for just the shell option, which is Schedule B here. So the shell would be building the boathouse with the exterior walls, the roof, the foundation, but none of the interior on the mezzanine, none of the interior improvements for a coaching space. And additionally, this budget anticipates that all $250,000 of the school district's allocation for the project will be able to be allocated. However, they do have some limitations on what that money can be put towards. They're only able to put money towards tenant improvements in the project, and if we leave out the mezzanine section in Schedule B, a lot of that money may not be used. So we might actually, we're projecting a shortfall of about $71,000 for Schedule B, whereas we, building Schedule C, we'd be able to use most of that allocated money, so the shortfall would be between $65,000 and $78,000 as currently projected. So as Debbie mentioned, we're here to confirm the schedule of construction, as well as seek a little guidance on which of these options we'd like to pursue going forward, whether we want to try and stay strictly within the currently allocated budget, only pursue the building shell at this time, whether we'd like to allocate additional funding, seek additional funding through various methods for the full project as currently designed in the 90% stage, whether that's through a formal capital campaign, some sort of internal or external city loan program, whether it's finding additional money in the CIP budget or through other city fundings. And yeah, so that's, that's what we're looking for from, from y'all tonight.
And just for further clarification, so whether it's the shell or the full boathouse, because of the declining school district contribution in the shell option, both options have a shortfall of, in the range of 70-something thousand dollars, right?
Correct.
So both options, in other words, both options need about 70-something thousand. And given our experience, I just think you should round it up to 100, because that's the way the world around here works. But so, first question is, do you want to go with, which option do you want to go with? And if you do, how do you, city council, want us to find that 100K? You could either find it out of your own city general fund reserves, or you could ask the nonprofit world, i.e. the rowing clubs, to do a capital campaign.
Councilmember Marshall.
So one question for whoever can answer it then. There's a private organization, a rowing organization, I understand that's rather prominent throughout the region. What was there going to be, their anticipated role, and do they have resources and capacity for raising money?
That's a great question. So we are currently looking at a somewhat convoluted use structure based on the various needs of the tenants. In order to contribute to the project, the school district needs to be the primary tenant while the city remain landlords of the building. However, as currently structured, the Pocock Foundation would be operating the actual programs and overseeing the management of the building day-to-day, because they bring, you know, the expertise that I think you're referring to in, in the region. And so they would be subcontracted through the school district, as well as overseeing the local programs in the community.
What's their funding capacity?
Oh, right, I'm sorry.
Or, or potential?
So they, that's, that's a good question. I think they are very committed to seeing this happen, and they have expressed the willingness to assist in fundraising if necessary. That question hasn't been formally put in front of them, because we're not sure really what we're looking for in terms of need, excuse me, for the project. But they, I think, would be very willing to bring the resources of their foundation to bear if necessary. Yeah. And I should also mention that even though it's not in the presentation, we're looking at a staff recommendation that we do an alternate bid option that includes both options. So when the bids come in, we can see what the pricing would be, because obviously, we're working off of projections right now. When the actual bids come in, it's kind of anybody's guess as to how closely the projections are going to be tied. So there is an option to sort of see both going forward and then make a decision further down the line, but given that we know we probably have a gap to raise, that's what we're trying to approach right now.
Councilmember Curtis?
So in general, I am in favor of finishing the building correctly, putting in the mezzanine, especially in the short haul, the cost isn't really that different. I'm okay with the option three of putting the bid out both ways and then make a final decision as we get more information. In general, I am a big fan of public-private cooperation, but this feels more like public-public, where we're putting in pretty much all the money, us and the school district, but I'm not sure the reality of asking the foundation to do fundraising is going to work out. I, I think we haven't given them enough le, le, forward-looking time for us to need the money. And I don't know if there's any way to say, well, we'll pay it upfront. Would you do some fundraising and we'd like it to be repaid? I've just never heard of anybody working that way, but it, it feels to me like to get some of the private investment, both from the money standpoint and the buy-in standpoint, feels to me like that would be my ideal.
And I, I think you hit on a good point, that the current construction timeline we're working at is going out to bid around the holidays, and that is not a lot of time to do a capital fundraising campaign. And so even though there's willingness, if we push back that construction timeline, we start hitting a much busier construction time of year, as well as just opening us up to a lot of projections that we aren't currently prepared for, and we're worried that the cost will go up.
Councilmember Januski?
I'm in, also in option B and C, option three. And, you know, I would like to see the private sector fundraise, but if they can't fundraise what they need, I would like to see us help out with that, just because, you know, our number-one council goal is to get people to the water, and, you know, that's what the citizens want. And it's not a huge, it's not a huge amount like some other projects, so it's kind of where I'm leaning right now.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
I'm also in concurrence with staff recommendation to go out, you know, with a flexible option so we can get a little more information. I, I do feel like the, the foundation, the private sector, you know, should, should contribute to this and have some skin in the game, and I, I think they're prepared to do that. That's normal. In fact, the extent of public dollars relative to private in this particular boathouse is pretty unusual. So I, I, I don't see the 65 to 100 as being something that would be insurmountable for the foundation to come up with, particularly if we are thinking about, I think what we talked about in one-on-ones, but maybe Rob could help me out here, but I think we talked about potentially construction not even starting until the fall, or, but anyway, I, I remember we talked about a timeline that might work.
I think one thing we talked about was if you want the nonprofit world to contribute, you could continue with the project and, and fund it, but then not, not turn over use or lease the building to the nonprofit world until they fundraise the 100,000. So we could have it all built and ready to go, but say, hey, nonprofit world, you need to pitch in 100,000 before you can actually use the building. That was one idea that came up.
Councilmember Smith?
My comments are pretty, quite similar to Councilmember Shrubnik's in that I would go with the staff recommendation, but I would also, I would like to see the private sector help and close that gap. And I would just, you know, it doesn't mean it can't be revisited by the council in the future, but I think it would be nice if they had an expectation of, of what they would be required, and, and especially since we still don't really have any really idea of how our, our maintenance and operation agreement is going to all come together, that I think it's even more important that we don't obligate ourselves more on the capital side without understanding the additional funding.
If I could speak to the second part of that.
Sure.
Actually, as of Friday afternoon, we do have some verbal agreement as to how the maintenance and operations agreement has come together. A fee structure was agreed on between Pocock Foundation and the school district, so that agreement is being drafted finally in its final form and going to be put forth to the legal teams for everybody involved. So do have some positive movement in that area.
Great. Well, I'm glad to hear that. That's, I think, an important piece that I, I still believe they should be involved on the capital side.
Sure.
But I'm thrilled to hear that you've worked out the, the operations side. Thank you.
Could staff remind us the money that came together for this? I know the city's portion is relatively small. Could you just give us a quick sketch of the money that came together that, that we've assembled so far and how much of that is city money versus other, other sources?
Sure, absolutely. So $56,800 has been spent prior to 2019. We're allocating $242,500 from the state capital budget S-1889, $250,000 from the school district, $611,000 from the King County Youth Sports Grant that was transferred from the St. Ed's Ballfields Project, $22,000 and change from an RCO grant, and then from the city, $23,000 and change from park impact fees, and almost $13,000 from REIT.
So the city's portion now is about 26, you said?
It's about 41 combined between parking impact and REIT, and then the additional $56,000 that was spent previous to this year.
Okay. Councilmember Curtis?
So when is the project supposed to be finished? And the reason I'm asked, well, go ahead and answer that first.
Sure. So I believe we're projected to open in the late summer, early fall of 2020.
Okay. Because what I was thinking, you don't spend all the money the first day you start the project, so maybe the Pocock Foundation could do their fundraising and be done by June-ish or whatever of next year. So we're spending the upfront money, and they're coming in with the last dollars to finish the project. Is that kind of what we're talking about might work? Or you're just talking about, we finish it all, and then we just don't turn it over to them until they contribute? It's slightly different.
What you're saying makes sense, so I think that scenario could work as well?
Because that would give them a good eight months to do some fundraising, which makes sense.
And then I think under that scenario, presumably, there would be some sort of endpoint where if the money isn't there, then we have a conversation about how to move forward. where if the money isn't there, then we have a conversation about how to move forward to that point. Yeah, I think if the council's comfortable with that. I don't have a problem from the staff's side. Any anticipated issues?
Right now in our schedule, the bids are due to come in end of February. So by then, we should be able to have a better picture of both the cost for the full boathouse and then without the second level. And then that decision could be made about how the fundraising can happen. And then there's about 60 days, I think, in the Division One specs right now toward the contract. So there's a timeframe at which it can be evaluated before it's awarded to the contractor.
That also allows us to go off with a much more concrete number as opposed to the projections we're working off of here, which it's hard to tell someone to fundraise for $100,000 and then find out it's actually 200,000. Obviously changes the tactic, so that flexibility is very helpful.
Councilmember Smith.
I just wanted to add, you know, one other component on this, on the city cost side is we've spent considerable dollars improving that area. May not be right where the pad is, but even right where the pad is, where we have done a lot of work around there over the last few years. And that's a significant city contribution that really makes this even a viable project to begin with.
Yeah, if I could add to that, we have over a million dollars into that portion of the park now with the boardwalk, which will connect the boathouse to the playfield, the parking, the new dock. And like you said, the pad has been prepared and ready for construction as well.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I think I'm generally hearing is a consensus to follow the staff recommendation and pursue, and an interest in pursuing Pocock doing some fundraising to help close the gap. Am I incorrect with that? Okay.
Councilmember Marshall.
Okay, so if we, yeah, if we weren't going to go to that or if we were going to have formal discussion, I don't know if we need to or otherwise or how it arises. I'm certainly in favor of a more fiscally conservative approach in terms of looking at what the Pocock Foundation and these interests can do for investment. I think that since we're going to be dealing with budgetary issues coming up in the future, that we've got to look at a lot of places where we should try to be more efficient and tighten what we're doing. And I think it'd be more effective to build it without a mezzanine. I also think about the aspect of a great project and a great program. I want to make sure that we have enough for further programs and further equitable influence that might help out or provide recreation opportunities for a larger range of the community than just the rowing community.
All right, well, let's break this up then into two separate questions. And let's, if folks are willing, let's have a discussion quickly then on options for build package first. And then we can have a discussion about funding, second. Does that work for everybody? Yeah, we should probably have a motion. Does anybody have a motion that they want to make?
I'd move to concur with staff recommendation to go out for bid for both B and C, to have flexibility to get the information for both.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. So we have a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion?
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, that, Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Okay, just a second, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
I'd be in favor of just B then for the reasons just stated.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yeah, I'm going to, I'm in favor of the staff recommendation in part because once you include the city's, the school board, the school district's funding, the gap between A and B is, I mean, marginal, it's a few thousand dollars. And I think we heard from a lot of folks in the rowing community a few months ago when we were discussing the King County parks money, expressing how important that mezzanine level really was towards the functioning of the facility. And if the difference in funding for us is just, you know, five, $10,000, I think it's completely worth, you know, building out that mezzanine. So I'll be voting in favor. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Passed, 5-1.
All right, so next part of the discussion then is whether we want to reach out to Pocock and have some sort of expectation of skin in the game, of fundraising to complete this. Do we have any discussion around that? I mean, what I've heard from everybody here, I could be wrong, is that maybe Councilmember Danuski.
I've talked already, but yeah, I'm in favor of Pocock fundraising. But push can and shove, I'd also be in favor of us completing the project.
Yeah, that's fair. Sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to structure this part now. So does anybody have any suggestions? Do we have any wild motions that we can discuss?
I'll make a motion that we ask Pocock Foundation to do some fundraising toward this capital project. And I guess I would ask staff to give us a recommendation on the amount we should ask. And we should be fairly specific and do it sooner than later. I wouldn't want to not do anything till, this is not part of motion. I don't want to wait till February when we're doing bids to finally say fundraising. We need to be telling them now, we think we want 100,000 or what it is, ever it is that staff recommends.
So I think that's exactly what we would recommend. As the city manager mentioned, I think rounding up to 100,000 is the safe bet to start with right now. And part of the reason we're here tonight is because we do feel going out earlier to start this ball rolling is very important so that we can stay on the current timeline. So that would definitely be our recommendation is to start that at the $100,000 level now, but leave us the leeway down the road so we're not cutting off potentially lucrative sources of funding at a smaller amount if it turns out we need more down the road. So to try and structure it that way.
Councilmember Smith.
That sounds great. And I would, in that, I would hope you would include what the city manager talked about as far as the other improvements around the general vicinity just because I'm sure from a fundraising standpoint, one of the things they're going to want to know is what is our, what is our skin in the game? And obviously, there is some from the grant side that you could argue is, you know, within the city still, but at least real dollars, there is a lot of money that we've spent.
There's also the cost of the land and staff time and everything else, so.
Deputy Mayor, we need a second.
Did we have a formal motion there?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So motion, second. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Passed.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got the proposed 2021-2026 Financial Sustainability Plan process. Rob Krenlunzy, City Manager, Joanne Gregory, Finance and Administration Director.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about this really important topic, Financial Sustainability Plan. And we have with us right here on my right, Tori Brazidis with Chancery Civic, a consulting firm. And we'll be learning a little bit about her and her role or her proposed role a little bit later. But as you, as the city council, are very well aware, you've done a great job adopting balanced budgets over the years. And as a result, you've actually been able to build up your reserves and keep them healthy. And that's resulted in things like a triple-A bond rating. And it's given you budget flexibility to respond to different opportunities that come up. And so that's been great. But over the years, we've also been talking to you about how eventually, because our cost of doing business has been rising faster than our revenues, because of that phenomenon, eventually the financial lines are going to cross, so to speak. And over the years, as we've done our six-year financial projections, it seems like in any given year over the last decade or so, we've always been several years away from the financial lines crossing. And even now, our six-year forecast that we have shows our financial lines crossing in about 2021 or 2022 if we're lucky. And so you may ask yourself, wait a second. So we're always two years, two or three years away from the lines crossing, but they never seem to cross. So should we just take all this with a grain of salt and not really worry about it? Well, unfortunately, the answer to that question is increasingly no. It's true that our lines have never crossed and we're always several years away from crossing. But the reason they have not crossed over the years is because we have taken affirmative measures to make sure they don't cross. You've increased revenues in some areas. You've made cuts in other areas. We've transferred general fund operating costs to things like the swim fund and to capital funds to take pressure off of our operating funds. So we've done various things, taken several, actually more than several, many measures over the years to keep the lines from crossing. Unfortunately, we're kind of running out of ideas on how to keep the lines from crossing with things like the state-imposed property tax limit of 1% growth per year. That artificially keeps our revenues from keeping up with the cost of doing business. Also, revenues like utility tax have been relatively flat. Meanwhile, our cost of doing business has been continuing to rise at a 4% to 5% per year clip. So we really do think it is time to address this issue of the financial lines potentially crossing in the next few years. And so we're actually proposing, and you know this because you directed us to do this at the January retreat, but we're now proposing tonight a process by which we can get to a financial sustainability plan where our lines don't cross in a six-year forecast. And so that's what we're here to talk to you about tonight. And I'd like to turn over the time to Joanne Gregory, who will talk about phase one of that process. We're talking about two phases, and Joanne will talk about phase one.
Thank you, Rob. Yes, this is a two-phase process with a number of steps in each phase. So I'll talk about the first phase we propose. And just remind everyone, you know, the goal here is to create a plan for at least six years or three bienniums so that city resources and expenditures can be sustained and at least balance through that period of time. The first phase is really essentially gathering information and preparing for the rest of the process. And it has several steps that include verifying priorities and results through PBB, engaging Chancery Civic to manage the community engagement portion of the process and facilitate a community survey, to engage an independent evaluation of the long-term financial forecast, and to create a city task force to study financial sustainability options. So to speak to each of those a little bit more, the first step, verifying priorities and results through PBB. You're very familiar with priority-based budgeting as we've been doing that now since 2014. And the city staff is currently performing an update of the PBB program inventories, the costs and the scores. We feel that this is going to provide a really reliable tool for discerning which city programs and activities are best achieving the results and the values that you want and that the community wants. And those outcomes from the priority-based budgeting process will be a very useful tool in phase two. The second step is to engage Chancery Civic to manage the community engagement portion of this project and to facilitate a community survey. Chancery Civic is represented tonight by Tori Brazidis, who we will recommend to you as the project manager. In the agenda packet, she has provided a proposed process to create a financial sustainability plan. And so at this time, I'm going to give her an opportunity to introduce herself to you and provide a bit of her background.
All right, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, members of the city council, for having me here tonight. I have enjoyed working on a short-term basis with your staff on this. And I really appreciated that Kenmore is clearly a very, a lean, creative and entrepreneurial city. So I appreciate your finding the right help for the right situation. So a little bit of my background, for 15 years, I have been working in communications and community relations for elected officials and appointed officials. So helping form good relationships with the community, helping navigate tough conversations. And I've specialized in communications and working through issues that don't have any easy answers because those are some of the hard ones. So some of my work most recently has been over in the city of Bothell as the Assistant City Manager, where I managed the public safety levy and bond process that you might have seen recently. Very robust community engagement strategy there as per the direction of council to make sure that they had all the information that they needed. And so that resulted in ballot measures. The levy passed at 60% and the bond at 65%. So we were very clear with everyone that every option was on the table. It was fair consideration of all options, very good legitimacy of data, and a very clear community engagement process so that everybody knew what the conversation was. Prior to local government, my background was in just communications and public relations, including some work for then Congressman Jay Inslee as his press secretary and also as a PR consultant to one of the top national firms for foundations and nonprofits, where my clients included Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the John S. James L. Knight Foundation. So a lot of work for public sector communications. And it's an honor to be here today to talk about this process. I'll welcome in your questions.
Thank you. Okay, so should we engage Tori Brazidis and Chancery Civic to manage the community engagement? The next part of that process, which she would oversee, would be to perform a survey to assess citizen satisfaction with quality of life, with the services that the city currently offers and the cost of those services. The next step would be to also engage an independent evaluation of the long-term financial forecast for the general and the street funds. And we recommend retaining management partners to work with the council, the city manager, finance and city staff as needed to evaluate the city's current financial condition, examine and improve the financial forecast and the assumptions. This would be another set of eyes on the financial forecasts that you and I and the staff and Rob look at every year and evaluate those assumptions and make sure we've incorporated and thought of all the contingencies that may arise in the next six years. And the goal would be to ascertain the problem as accurately as possible so that we can present that to you. And the problem defined as, well, when do the lines representing revenues and expenditures actually cross? How big is the problem and what is driving that problem? From that, or during this first phase, we also hope to create a financial sustainability task force. And they would go to work on the problem in 2020 after the January retreat. And Rob will describe this action more fully when he talks about the second phase. But all of the data and information gathered during this first three months, covering the period from now until the end of the year, would be the survey results, the PBB outcomes, the financial forecast. All of this would be reported to you for discussion at your 2020 January retreat. And then following the January 2020 retreat, we'll move into phase two. I'll turn this back over to Rob to talk about phase two.
Thank you, Joanne. Any questions so far about phase one?
Councilmember Marshall.
And how much would the proposed contract be again, in the neighborhood of $50,000?
For both phase one and phase two with management partners, we're looking at about $65,000, I believe. Yeah. $63,000, yeah.
For the public participation was... For the public participation, was how much roughly, 30?
For Chancery Civic, about $47,000.
Forty-six, thank you.
And that's for the full duration of the project. Yeah, and that's kind of an upper amount. We may not use all of those hours every week, but it's a kind of an upper-end estimate.
Councilmember Danuski.
Can you explain why they'd only be evaluating the general fund and the street fund and not the other funds?
Yes. I'm happy to take that. All right. Yeah. So thank you. I wanted to actually point that out to make that extra clear that this analysis or this process is really only a look at the general fund and the street fund. Those are our two operating funds. And those are what I call the general fund funds. Because, yes, they're two separate funds, but the general fund feeds the street fund. And so they're very connected. And those are our big operating funds. And they're the ones that are having this struggle, if you will, the lines crossing. Things like our surface water fund. You stabilized that fund, and it's a separate enterprise fund that's self-sustaining. You stabilized that fund earlier this year when you increased the rates on the swim fees. So we feel like that fund is pretty well stabilized. All of your other funds are special funds that are one-time in nature, like capital funds and your real estate excise tax fund and your impact fee funds and things like that that are more one-time or capital-related. Joanne, anything to add to that?
No, I don't think so. I think that's a good explanation. It's just, these are really the only funds where we have much discretion on how the resources can be spent. Property taxes and sales taxes and utility taxes and, you know, contracts for service. But as Rob said, most of the other funds either have a special purpose and they're restricted to that special purpose, or they're for capital purposes only.
All right. Councilmember Curtis.
So I just want to clarify. So it sounds like the management partners, the estimate cost is $62,900. And then the Chancery Civic is $47,520 for Phase One and Phase Two. The part I'm struggling with is the management partner piece. It feels to me like, I sort of had this idea that the priority-based budgeting, the contracting that we did with that organization and all the work we've been doing the last several years to gather data, put things in quartiles and all that, should somehow have answered some of this question. So it feels like we're asking another consultant to give us information that we should at least partially already have. So there's some confusion in my mind why we need that piece.
Would it be okay if we talked about Phase Two? And then that might help answer your question.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. All right. So as far as Phase Two goes, once the consultant management partners has looked at our six-year forecast and created their own independent six-year forecast and compared them, and then the problem will be even better defined. And like Joanne said, we'll be taking that to you to the January retreat to really talk about problem definition and really what we're dealing with. Once we've gotten your thoughts and input on that, then we're proposing to move forward with Phase Two, which is to have that community conversation about what to do next and possible solutions and options. And so management partners and Chancery Civic would also help us with that. Chancery Civic would help us with the community outreach and bringing the different aspects of the project together and the messaging and the content, things like that. And management partners would dive deeper into the numbers and come up with a matrix of proposed solutions based on several strategies. And if you go to the management partner's scope of work, which is Exhibit C in your packet, and it's Page Eight, you don't have to go there, but you're welcome to if you wish. But they propose to identify the following types of strategies that would then go into a matrix of options that we could choose from: revenue enhancements, expenditure controls and cost shifts, service delivery model changes, and service delivery reductions. So that's where priority-based budgeting would come in partnership with this tool that management partners will have for us. And I think it's really important that we do our PBB work, priority-based budgeting work in advance, where we have the programs all updated and costed and scored against city council priorities so that when we start talking about service delivery reductions or service delivery model changes, we'll have PBB as a reference point to help us have that conversation. So that if somebody says, well, I think we should reduce service X, you could go, okay, that's an interesting idea. Let's go see how that program X scored in the priority-based budgeting quartiles. Oh, it's Quartile One? So you want to reduce that? And you want to add something in Quartile Four? What about that? And just, you know, and have that kind of conversation. So we actually think PBB will be a nice partner tool to the management partners' analysis.
So has management partners worked with the priority-based budget in the past?
I don't think so, but we sure have talked to them about it a lot. They know that it's something that we've used and that we plan on having in partnership with this. One thing that's worth noting is management partners has done this in a lot of cities, notably here in Washington. They did it with Newcastle and Mercer Island. I talked to both city managers there, and they were very pleased with management partners and the work they did and the product that came out of it. So the idea is to have that community conversation with the assistance of Chancery Civic and management partners and also our PBB tool. You can do it in a couple of ways, different ways you can have that conversation. One is we could appoint a citizen task force, a temporary citizen task force to meet from January to June. And during that time, they could meet a couple of times a month where we also present the six-year forecast problem to them. They learn about the city operations and where the money goes. They learn about priority-based budgeting. They hear from management partners about possible solutions. And then they provide a recommendation in the spring, like around May or June. You could either, we could either have a citizen task force do that, or you could be that committee to do it, if you wish, supplemented by, you know, town hall meetings and things like that. But the idea is to have a report with a matrix of alternatives and a recommendation from me to you in late May, early June. And that timing is important because that then informs the biennial budget process for '21 and '22 that gets started in summer of 2020. So that's the timing that we're looking at, is to have this all wrapped up by late May, early June, so that we can get going on a budget preparation process for the next biennial.
Councilmember Shabnik.
I just had a kind of clarifying question. The task force, it's mentioned in the, the, oh, no. It's this consultant Tori, Tori's firm, Chancery. Their scope, but then also with that, management partners is mentioned, and the city. So I'm, who, if we go that direction, who is actually recruiting those people, teaching those people, supervising that, moving that piece of work? I mean, that's decidedly not trivial.
The, who would, yeah, who would be staffing that committee? The three of us right here.
Okay, so not management partners then? Okay.
No, not management partners. They may come to a committee meeting once or twice, but they won't be staffing that committee.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
All right, so we're down to requests and actions. So you guys want us to confirm the PBB results, approve the process, a couple other things. Yeah, if I can turn the microphone over to Joanne.
Well, once again, as we continue to work through the priority-based budgeting process, we would like to confirm with you that the results, as shown on the result maps included in your packet, which you're quite familiar with, are still the results that you want to move forward with or if you are interested in modifying them in any way or even, for that matter, assigning any weights to them, which we haven't done in the past. But I present that as an opportunity that some may be more closely aligned with your particular goals or not, but that would be an opportunity too. But if there's anything changing with the results, this would be a good time to know that sometime within the, you know, next few weeks. But if you're happy with them, I'd like to know that.
Any discussion, any thoughts? Councilmember Curtis.
So having been lucky enough to be through this several times already, including the very first time when it felt like we put in a massive amount of work assembling that, I'm inclined not to add a lot of extra complexity by adding, you know, weighting scales and all that sort of thing. I think it's a tool. It helps to some extent. But really, I think our yearly retreat where we set the priorities for the city, it overrides kind of everything else. So to be changing this document every time we change something from Number 12 up to Number 4, I don't think makes any sense. So I'm inclined to sort of fiddle with it as little as possible unless somebody, you know, who has some ideas that they would like to tweak and fiddle, I'm not inclined to make major changes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Danuski.
I'm happy with the results as we have them right now.
Well, I'm actually in the mood to fiddle, just a little tiny bit, so. Yeah. And it's fairly minor. On the, I don't know what's numbered is, but on the one about effective mobility, it's the gray, has the gray bubbles. I have two minor changes I'd like to make there. One, I'd like to change the overall bubble to include a little bit about safety. So effective mobility and connected, safe, and reliable transportation systems, just to bring the safety element in a little bit instead of just efficiency. So that's one proposal I'd like to make. And the second one is in the top circle. I'd like to tweak it just a little bit. I'd like to read something along the lines of, "Provides access to safe roads, sidewalks, and pedestrian, sidewalk slash pedestrian paths, and bike paths that efficiently moves people and goods." So we're not just talking about roads and traffic flow. So those are, those are the, that's the fiddling I would propose. So I'd like to make a motion to change the middle thing there to effective mobility and connected, safe, and reliable transportation systems.
Second.
Do you want to do them, the two separate issues?
Yeah, let's just do them separately. I mean, unless, because who knows? There might be more fiddling that happens in one or the other, and I don't know. It's easier that way. So we've got a motion, a second.
Do we have a second? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Shabnik. Any discussion? All right, Clark, can we take the role on that?
Sure. Councilmember Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herping.
Yes.
Councilmember Shabnik.
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Passed.
All right. And then my second motion would be to change the top circle to read, "Provides access to safe, safe roads, sidewalks, slash pedestrian paths, and bicycle paths that efficiently move people and goods." Well, yeah.
Councilmember Danuski.
I'm not seconding it, but the bottom-left bullet pretty much is what you have.
You know, you're right. Never mind, I'll withdraw. That's, that is a good point, thank you. Fair enough, all right. So have we confirmed our PBB results then? Are we all on the same page?
That sounds good, unless you want to move to change gray to magenta.
What, I'm mauve? Would you mauve? All right. So next up is approving or tweaking the proposed financial sustainability plan process. Any discussion? Councilmember Curtis.
I guess I'm still a little confused where this citizen task force fits in. If I agree to this, Number Two, have I agreed to that task force?
No, in fact, I would like your direction on that. I didn't, in my verbal presentation to you just now, I didn't firmly say that you must form a task force. You, as the city council, can retain that role, if you wish, or you can delegate it to an advisory task force that can come back with a recommendation for you in the spring. It's really your comfort level and, but just know that if it's your, if it's you and not a task force, we will be putting this on the agenda quite frequently throughout, you know, January through May.
Councilmember Curtis.
So if I could just follow up on that, you know, it feels to me like to have the right people on the task force to create a real benefit, they'd have to have some experience with city governments, budgets, maybe entities that were on the edge of ruin and they brought them back. You would have to have a fairly specialized group of people to just have a bunch of citizens that you bring them up to speed. It feels like we'd be asking a lot of them and not necessarily getting a lot of return. And it's one that I feel important enough, I'm willing to give the extra time as a council member to manage this one ourselves. So to me, it feels different than like the things we delegate to the planning commission. I think we should save this one. I think we can have lots of public input, lots of, you know, education going, you know, both directions. We need to hear what our citizens are thinking. But I think it's just easier if we keep the responsibility for this one.
Councilmember Smith.
I agree mostly with what you just said, councilmember. But the one thing I would add is that if you kind of step back and look at the macro view of what this whole project is, it probably would serve it well from a council and a city credibility and transparency side to have some sort of a citizen body that is involved in the process just, if for no other reason, to add an element of credibility to the whole process. Because we don't really know where this ends up. And where it ends up may require tough decisions. And with those tough decisions, I think every ounce of credibility that the citizens can see in the process probably has benefit.
One thing to note is if you did want us to do a task course for the first few meetings of the task force, it would be all about education. So we'd bring in our department heads to talk about what they do and where the money comes from. We'd have to do a pretty intensive course on priority-based budgeting. We think we can do all that, but you're right, it's going to be an uphill learning curve for the first few meetings at least.
Councilmember Shabnik.
I actually thought Councilmember Curtis stated my views pretty well. I would love to see us do the town halls that I think are kind of optional in there. I, you know, I also feel like there'd be a pretty steep learning curve, as you've even said. And that's a, you know, I'm not sure how much return and I'm not sure what that would feel like with, I mean, it's different with the planning commission. That's an issue, that they're tasked with researching an issue and bringing recommendations. This feels quite different because we already have an outside consulting firm that's going to be presenting us with options. So it's, I'm not quite sure what the role really would be for that citizen task force.
I mean, speaking for myself, I was kind of torn on this also. I think I'm falling where Councilmember Smith is, where I do see kind of a, I do see some potential gains from having citizens involved earlier on in a more direct role rather than us kind of running the show. Because the decision we're making could be, or the decisions we may have to make, could be fairly drastic as far as. could be, or the decisions we may have to make could be fairly drastic as far as what we've done with our budget in the past, and having some citizen buy-in and kind of elevating a forum for some folks to really have their voices heard, making sure that, of course, the folks that we bring together are a good kind of cross-section of the city, could make, making those decisions a little bit more palatable or bring perspectives we won't have otherwise through a town hall. And I, yeah, I'm a little torn on this also, but I, I think I may see some value in actually having a citizen commission myself.
I have a question on Shoreline. It seems like when they did their presentation, they had a really strong citizen input. Did they have a citizen committee like this?
They did. They had an advisory committee that provided some recommendations to the city manager. Mercer Island and Newcastle, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they did not have a. Oh, Mercer Island did, okay.
So what was the skill level of this committee? I mean, just because somebody's interested in the city, I'm not sure it necessarily gives them the skills to make this level of decisions. How do you pick those people, maybe is part of what I'm wrestling with? And, and so even if we went this route, I guess as, as a council member, I'd want some input in who we chose, even if we decided to go this route. So I'm, I'm a little bit, little bit flexible, as long as we main saying, you know, we really think we've got an advisory committee that really is, we're going to believe what they say. If, if we aren't going to believe their advice, then why bother?
Hang on, let's have a second. Councilmember Danuski?
Yeah, I, I guess I'd lean a little bit towards going with an advisory committee, but I think, I don't know, the, the trick is that you could end up just getting an answer that you're not liking, which is pretty much what I'm hearing everybody else is kind of saying in a way is, you know, they'll give a recommendation, and then we don't take the recommendation, and then we sound like we're not looking, you know, listening to the citizens. So it would be very hard to not take their recommendation if we had a committee. So that's one thing to think about.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of a citizen task force, and oftentimes, I think the most valuable input are from those people who are just ordinary citizens and who have somehow made it to the point to reiterate to all of us who have been decision-making for some time what their priorities are, what their needs are, without any particular specialized set of knowledge.
I think sometimes it's important to get an outside, kind of outside-the-bubble perspective, because I think those of us that have been here for a while, you know, we kind of get it, and we've, we've heard everything, and we're in kind of a bubble with, with a lot of this stuff, and I think getting outside perspective can be helpful. But like councilmember Curtis said, I would want to, the council to have some say in who's appointed. Does that make sense? Councilmember Shabnik?
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, I definitely want citizen input. My question is around this particular methodology. I mean, I think there's a lot of good methodologies in there, town halls, forums, surveys, I mean, you name it. I, I'm a little bit concerned about the task force method of, you know, a few people having an outsized impact. I mean, granted, yes, that is what we do with the planning commission, but that just feels quite different than financial decisions. I mean, we're, you know, the, for lack of a better term, you know, the buck stops with the council. I mean, we, you know, we have to ultimately make the decision, so, so that, I, you know, I, I, I don't have super strong feelings about it, and I can certainly see the value of getting that input, absolutely. I just worry about, a little bit about what that's going to look and feel like in a small group like that.
Councilmember Curtis?
Would the task force have the ability to have public testimony? Because if it's, because we're already asking for the city's input, what they think, so is it going to be surveys? So somehow this group, unless they have the right to get more input, it, it just could be, I don't know, it may or may not be representative of what the city, citizens want.
Are you asking me that question?
Yeah. What, what, how did you envision this task force? Would it have the same power as the planning commission to get citizen input on their ideas?
I definitely envisioned it as having open public meetings that we would announce. Whether they were going to have citizens come up to a microphone and provide input, hadn't thought in that much detail yet, but I would definitely welcome your thoughts and ideas on that. I mean, in response to what councilmember Shabnik said earlier about, oh, what was it? Sorry, it was about a small group of people and, and that perspective, but I also think that there is something to be said for, if you're just doing large meetings with the general public who maybe isn't able to get completely up to speed and get all the information about, this is a very complex topic, this is super complex, and the general public may not have the same level of understanding, and if we are able to get a decent group of people, maybe we can get, get them the background that they need and then get that perspective. We don't, I think we should be clear, though, that we're not bound by anything that they would recommend, but I, I don't know, I don't know. Do we have, councilmember Smith?
I was going to say, part of it may be in how it's structured at the very beginning and setting just the correct expectation of what, what the body is and what they're not. And, but there is value, you know, when you think of like even the planning commission, or for me, through the years, oftentimes there's an exchange when they present to us or they talk to us, there, there's good conversations and good information that comes out of just the back and forth about talking with somebody that has gone through the process, but in a different environment and a different format than how we work up here and, and how we engage with staff. And so there may be, you know, I think there, that could be beneficial, but I, probably a lot of it just has to do with also that correct expectation at the very beginning of what the role is and what it's not.
I think the last time we brought together an ad hoc committee like this was around the pedestrian and bicycle safety, and I think we set fairly clear parameters with them on, on what the expectations were, and, and we ended up taking most of the recommendations, but I don't think there was any thought that we were bound to do that, you know? I, I don't know, I think, I think our staff can probably handle this if they say they can. I have faith in our staff.
They could.
Look at them. So we do need to make a decision on this process, or we're going to be here all night. And our city attorney has arrived, which means the clock is ticking. So we are, we do behoove ourselves to get through this as efficiently as possible. Do we have any motions? Do we have, how do we want to proceed with this? I mean, it seems like the major question is whether or not we're going to have a citizen committee.
Well.
Councilmember Smith?
How about, I'm just throwing this out, how about if we make a motion to proceed with it as it was presented, to have the committee, but I would assume that we, this could be changed in the next month or so if we chose not to, or, I mean, so maybe one way is to get, because if we are going to have a committee, we probably want to get the process rolling, but maybe it can be, if somebody has further concerns, we can address it before, you know, within, sometime within the next couple of meetings. So with that, I would make a motion that we proceed with having the committee.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Councilmember Curtis?
I think the key is just that we're kept in the loop, you know, who the proposed candidates are, who says yes, who says no, who are maybes, just so, as long as we have a lot of control over the who's on the group. And it's not like I want to tilt it to a certain outcome, because I don't really care what the outcome is. It's what the citizens want, but I want somebody with a high skill level, and I'm, I'm sure you would as well.
Deputy Mayor, I want to clarify the motions. Is the motion to approve the process or to approve the committee?
To approve the process as a whole.
That includes the committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Shabnik?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the process as long as, I mean, you've heard, you've heard the concerns, so I mean, you know, just addressing those to the best of, you know, your ability and keeping us in the loop. I'm less concerned about the, the who per se than just setting the expectations clearly. Yeah, so that's.
On councilmember Curtis's comment about committee members with a high skill level, so I'm not assuming that we'll have a committee full of a bunch of accountants. I'm assuming it will come from a cross-section of people. One might be a carpenter, and one might be a homemaker, and one might be a firefighter, or, I'll scratch that last one. Okay. But anyway, so when I hear high skill level, what I'm hearing about is intelligent people who can process information and learn quickly and that kind of thing.
I guess I was thinking at least somebody with like, at least some of the people, wouldn't have to be all of them, but with somebody with some financial background, maybe a business owner.
Okay, yes, some of them.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, that's what I mean by skill level.
Okay. But maybe not all of them accountants or something, yeah, okay. I mean, I'm kind of viewing this as kind of a very long-term focus group, you know, kind of, that's how I'm looking at it, and I think if we can get a good cross-section of the city to say this is kind of the direction that we need to go in, that gives us some solid footing when it comes to the rest of our outreach and proposals, I don't know. So are we good on that front?
We have to vote.
Oh, yes, we do need to vote. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yeah.
Yeah? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Shabnik?
Yes.
Passed.
All right, next up we have criteria for success.
Yeah, so if you go to Exhibit B, on page three of Exhibit B, it talks about criteria for success. This is all pretty straightforward, but we just wanted to be clear with you on these criteria. And you can see there's seven, no, there's eight. There's eight criteria for success there. Rather than go through them in detail, I'll just let you guys read. If you'd like, I can read them out loud. Is that a yes? Oh, you want me to read them out loud?
Sure.
Let's go for it. All right. So number one, the financial sustainability plan closes the gap in a way that the city council feels reflects the values of the community. For this reason, it is approved by the council and can be implemented. That's criteria, criterion number one. Number two is the approved financial, financial sustainability plan will close the gap for six years or three budget cycles, so through 2026, through multiple actions over that timeframe, similar to what we saw in Shoreline. Shoreline didn't do it in just one big action, they had multiple steps over multiple years. Number three, the community conversation about the financial sustainability plan is honest and open and reflects the feelings and needs of the entire Kenmore community. Number four, the council, the task force members, and the public are given clear, comprehensive information on the current state of finances and feel well-served. As much as possible, all questions are answered in plain language. Number five, experts are used to check the city's assumptions and improve, improve forecast models. Number six, revenue and expenditure options from city staff, city leadership, task force members, and the public are considered fairly and openly. Number seven, the process is well documented and clearly communicated in the city newsletter, in the newspaper, and on social media. Number eight, the city website serves as a single excellent source of information. It has all documents given to the task force, explains the current financial sustainability challenges, shows the task force meeting schedule, and invites input into the process. And those are the eight criteria.
Any questions, comments, discussion?
I'm going to assume then that since nobody has anything to say, that we are, that we approve of the, okay. Same head nods? All right, I think we can move forward with those as our criteria for success. Next proposed council action is to approve the agreement with management partners and also to approve the Chancery Civic professional services agreement.
Comments, questions?
I'll move. I'll move that we approve both of, both the, both the.
I'll second.
Contracts for management partners and Chancery Civic.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Saying no discussion, Clark, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shabnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passed.
All right, is there anything else on this?
No, thank you very much, appreciate it. Yeah, I want to thank you guys, too. This is, this is a very well-thought-out plan, and there was obviously a lot of, a lot of work and thoughtfulness went into it, so it's a big lift, but I think we're going to get something good out of this at the end of the day, so thank you. All right, next up is councilmember reports, comments, and initiatives. Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Marshall?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add?
Councilmember Shabnik?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Danuski?
I have something to add.
I thought you did.
You guys saw an email from me.
What, a multiply or divide, or?
It's, I've had a lot of fun going out to the peninsula, and Kingston especially has all these big chairs that people take selfies with and post onto social media. And I was out in the hiking in Nia Bay, there's a big chair there. There's out in Cape Flattery in the middle of the trail, in the middle of nowhere, there's a big chair there, and they just seemed so much fun for me. And I thought it would be really neat if we had one of them, not two, thought two at the beginning, but they're too big. But one of them that we can have either at town square or, you know, out here for a while or something, it's just something fun, so it's my thought. If anybody has a problem with that, let me know. Okay.
Do we need a motion to buy a chair?
I don't think we need a motion to buy a chair.
Did they seem safe for kids?
Yeah, the kids climbing all over them, like monkeys.
The height, the height and stuff and all that.
Councilmember Smith?
I read that number correct for two, the cost of two?
Was like thirty, four hundred or something like that.
Yeah, I was shocked.
But that was delivery as well, so it's probably about half that.
No, that's fine, I was, but I was like, wow, that must be a really good quality chair.
They're big.
Okay, looks like we're buying a chair.
I think we should put it for David Baker to sit on the new chair, right here.
That would be funny.
He complains so much about his chair.
All right, and I have nothing to add, so with that, we are going to recess to executive session, discussion of pending litigation per RCW 433110, subsection 1I, there will be no action. We expect this to take half an hour, is that correct? Half an hour.